Welcome back to the Tuesday, February 9, 2021 Board of Supervisors Meeting. We have one final item, 23, Sheriff Received Presentation on Emergency Repairs Needed for the Sheriff's Office and Adult Detention Center and Related Mechanical Systems. Make findings that an emergency exists and that action is necessary to respond to the emergency. Dispense with the competitive bidding requirements pursuant to County Code 3.29.023 and Public Contract Code 22035 and 22050 and authorize the purchasing agent to execute an emergency contract with ACCO for emergency repairs to the automated front-end Seamen's Mechanical System. Requires a four-fifths affirmative vote of the Board of Supervisors. Mr. DiFicilio, Mr. Macedo?
Good afternoon. My name is Jim Macedo. I'm an UnderSheriff with the Sheriff's Office, and today I have this emergency item before all of you. Prior to getting started, I just need to note a couple of things. I want to thank facilities for helping get us to this point, along with the CAO's office and County Council. I'm far from an expert on the county purchasing policy or process and also the public purchasing contract code. I did, however, draft this item with some help from those names mentioned, and discussing numerous issues with the sheriff's facilities, there are significant emergencies. However, we have determined that the first, most important thing that we need to fix is the computerized mechanical control systems, which is basically the brain for all of the operating systems in both facilities. So while you'll see reference to the facility being housed in the jail, and certainly the jail is an important facility, the mechanical controls control both the jail and the sheriff's office, which includes the 911 call center, our computerized operating system within the sheriff's office, which functions all of our radios, the 911 call center, and obviously our patrol investigative staff, administrative staff, front business office, et cetera. So all essential services. So what I'm asking the board, and I know the Chair already discussed this, but to break this down and essentially receive a very brief presentation from Patrick Martin on his communications with the private entity, the company that has done a review of all of our facilities. So I'm looking for you to receive that presentation on specifically the mechanical systems. Make findings that an emergency does exist based upon the documents you've received in the presentation today. We're asking for permission to dispense with competitive bidding requirements specifically due to the fact that there is an emergency. And Patrick, should you have questions, we'll be able to detail what emergencies have already occurred and how we've been able to kind of limp through those, for lack of a better term, to get the facility back up and running on a temporary basis. And then lastly, we're asking you to authorize the purchasing agent to execute the contract with ACO for these emergency repairs to begin. This does require a four-fifths vote by the board. And in addition, we're just going to brief the board also that this is the kind of first bite of the apple. We have other repairs that need to be done, and it is important to note for the board that the sheriff's office, for this first $150,000, we are utilizing existing sheriff's facility budget repair funds from our existing budget, so we're not asking for emergency funds such as contingency or reserves. We're asking to expend $150,000 from within our own budget. However, that is going to place us into a position where, as the remainder of the year comes about, we may not be able to handle any of our normal repairs that we do within our own budget. So we're kind of pushing all of our, excuse the analogy, poker chips on the table because this is a critical, a critical matter, and Patrick has been banging this drum, for lack of a better term, again, for a long period of time, and he has a much more, I think, specific description of what's going on. The sheriff is here also, obviously, to answer any questions that the board or the public may have, and with that, I will turn it over to Patrick Martin.
Patrick Martin, Facilities. Are there any specific questions related to this item, or would you like to just give a brief rundown?
Mr. Toffinelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Patrick, if you could, just do a brief rundown, and I'm aware, because of the conversations I've had with you and the sheriff and Jim, that there's a number of other things that have problems with this, but this specific one, if you could just do a quick rundown. Specifically, I'm a little miffed on the specific times it mentions in here that we've known about some of these things, and we put Band-Aids on it for a long time before it got to this point. And so when did we initially find that we had a problem with this? How far back does that date? Is that five years ago, four years ago, whatever? And then when we moved into the facility, we had a number of warranties that we should have been given, and those warranties should have been given to us before any retention or anything was paid. You asked for the warranties and everything on it. Do we have any warranties? Have the warranties expired? Or where are we on any of this item that was before us now, before we get into any of the other ones?
Sure. On this particular item, we've never had a warrantable product. The reason being is we failed to get the warranty protection and the service agreement for the system. So for whatever reason, that was not done, so this system has not been warranted from day one. We accepted the system as is. The problem has occurred since I came onboard and started to really look at the overall project and how it was turned over.
Do we have the exact date that we moved into the facilities?
Yes, we have a, we do have a certificate of occupancy from the state for the building. We are roughly, we are into our seventh year of occupancy of the building.
So it's six plus years. We're in our seventh, six years. Okay, thank you. Yeah, so basically, what your statement is, or what you're saying is, we hired Kitchell to be our representative, and they never required from any, at least this sub, and I'm assuming there's other subs, for closeout, before they got final payment, that they submit their warranties for all of their projects to us, so we have them in file, and they're all taken care of, and the warranties start from the time we take occupancy of that building. That never occurred.
I couldn't tell you the specifics on a case-by-case for subcontractors involved. We have warranties on certain products, some items we do not and never have had. Some items, we received a warranty but did not follow through with the requirements of it, so it fell out of warranty. So there's a wide variety of different scenarios with the different systems. Where we're at right now, I like to give you an easy-to-follow analogy, is we have a seven-year-old patient that is on life support with multiple organ failures. This round, we need to do a brain transplant. Beyond that, we need to start looking at each and every one of the other vital organs because they're in failure. Before we can do anything, we have to be able to communicate with the rest of the body. So once we get the brain in order, then we can reach out to all of the other vital components, the boiler, the heating, the cooling, the laundry, so there's a number of other very vital components that are at risk as well, but this is the first and most important step to getting it corrected.
Well, that, and I follow what you're saying, and I understand what you're saying. So that brings up the question here. What we're proposing to do here, instead of a Band-Aid, you're doing major surgery.
Brain transplant.
Oh, okay, major surgery, brain transplant, but still using the piece of equipment that has been installed. You're merely replacing the brain portion of it. We're not replacing the entire unit itself so we can start over and have a complete warranty starting from here on for whatever the warranty period is, whether it's a five-year warranty, a seven-year warranty, whatever. We are just replacing this piece of it, which may not give us any warranty if something else happens for the rest of that particular system. Would it be more beneficial to maybe look at not just doing that, but maybe replacing that system and start anew and get that full warranty on it and say, okay, we know this is covered for X amount of years, period? We can go on to this item now, and then to this item now, and to this item now. I mean, maybe, you can talk on that if you...
There's, with the size of this problem and this project, there are truly economies of scale that we could benefit from by taking on the entire project at once. From a fiscal standpoint, I don't know if that is possible. If it were, yes, we could drive the overall cost of this project down, we could shave years off of the project, and we could be in a better place very quickly with that type of expenditure of resources. Right now, my understanding is this 150 is available, and we've gone the best avenue protecting further investment and loss of this investment. So we're not throwing money at it, but yes, we could do a much better job with more money to facilitate a larger project.
Thank you.
So in our discussions with the County Administrative Office, obviously, we have some financial constraints, which we're trying to deal with the immediate emergency. And as an example, last week, our internal facilities maintenance folks were locked out of the computerized system that they couldn't even log in and make their adjustments. That's how they kind of make their repairs. They were completely locked out, so they had to work with our local IT and work with Siemens to get that back up and running. That involves shutting down water for the jail, heat, air, all of the necessary items that we need in order to maintain and keep the jail open. And we kind of documented that in the board item. What we don't want to do is end up in a position where we have to shut the facility down, move the inmates out, move the 911 call center out. And so what I specifically asked of Patrick after consulting with the County Administrative Office and Patrick, and all of us meeting and discussing the overall needs of the building, is what could we get done immediately? Because I'm being pushed to get the immediate issue fixed, and that's operate within our existing budget allotment to get the most critical point fixed so that we don't continue to degrade other systems in the facility that operate off that mechanical system. So yes, ideally, if we had several million dollars, we would want to fix this boom, 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 altogether. We do plan on coming back to the board and continuing to brief the board on what the additional needs are moving forward, but based upon communication with the County Administrative Office, the Sheriff's Office, Facilities, the best plan was to take this big project and take it one bite at a time. I can also tell you from coming to the board previously, the board doesn't appreciate us showing up with a massive multimillion-dollar request to fix a massive problem when we can fix it one piece at a time. So that also kind of drove our decision to start moving immediately, and that's essentially why we are here. The emergency does exist, though, with this mechanical system, and I would encourage and request the board that you not delay. Let's get this thing fixed, because this computerized system that our internal facilities engineers are limping through, it's day-to-day. They're having to go in and manually make these bizarre adjustments day-to-day to offset the fact that it's not operating very well.
Well, that leads me to another question. It's okay, Mr. Chair. If it's computerized, and we're talking about replacing the brain, computerized portion of it, over the course of the last six years, obviously, it needed updates. Did we continue and keep the updates at the appropriate times, did it require updates through the manufacturer? Again, this goes back to the warranty, and I'm interested in if we do this, and obviously it's something that needs to be done, that once we get this piece replaced, that we get a warranty on it and we keep the updates appropriately done when it's recommended by the manufacturer of what we're purchasing? So we're current, and we can't say, we didn't do, they can't say, you didn't do this, avoid the warranty.
So there's clearly two questions there. I'm going to answer the historical question, and then I'll bring Mr. Martin up to answer the future part with the new company. So as you recall, when we constructed the jail and opened the jail, the county chose at that time to retain Kitchell, not just as construction manager for the construction process, but we retained Kitchell for facility maintenance through a contract. This is when Ms. Lori Norton was the county administrative officer. At that time, a bill or a contract for Siemens was presented to the county at the executive level and told this is what it would cost to have them continue to service the project. And at the time, the county was in a poor fiscal situation due to the recession, and there was an executive decision made at that time to not continue with that, to continue rather than to pay for all of the updates and bring Siemens in. And it's not unlike any other IT project you get involved in. There are required updates, and if you do not maintain those, the system degrades itself. And what happens with a lot of these IT companies, and I'm noticing it's happening with the mechanical companies, that as they become more computerized, it's not the initial outlay of the cost that gets you, it's these reoccurring contracts in order to maintain the system so it doesn't fail. And that's something that Stan...
I'm turning down my audio for my Board of Supervisors meeting.
That's something that perhaps Stan...
I'm trying to eat a burrito.
Stan can...
Ms. Galino, your microphone's on.
Hi. Stan could perhaps discuss that, but also Patrick can, from a mechanical standpoint. He's more than capable. So to give you a walk down, History Lane Supervisor Toffinelli, that was the decision that was made at that time. That was not a sheriff's office decision, that was an overall county executive decision, largely based upon finances and the fact that we were retaining Kitchell. And I think there was an assumption at that time that Kitchell could maintain everything, and I think, I'm not sure that that was entirely accurate.
Thank you, Jim.
So in answer to your question, the work that we're proposing right now is going to come with a complete new front end, which includes the software, the computer, all of the components necessary to take back over the overall system. So it's coming with the updates, the service agreement, and everything that we need to maintain that moving forward. As we get beyond that, then as the boiler and chillers and those things start getting repaired, we will then, if we don't have a maintenance agreement to keep them up, we will do that at that time, so...
As we add those on.
Exactly. So this portion right here will be fully warranted and fully covered and have all of the necessary upgrades to keep us current moving forward with any other future projects.
I have one last question. Thank you, Patrick. What we're purchasing and what we're going to be installing, we'll make sure that it's compatible with every other system that it needs to be compatible with to operate.
Already done.
We don't have to purchase, no, now you have to purchase for the boilers this, because it's not compatible, because it is now six, seven years old. We want to make sure that we're integrated, everything works, and we can now add this in as we go along to whatever, and it's...
We have unfortunately had the luxury of time here, and so we've had a lot of upfront work done as far as what is and isn't capable, what systems are out there and available that could be integrated. So we've done our homework, I think, quite thoroughly and are comfortable with the direction we're going at this point.
Okay. Thank you, Patrick.
Any other questions? Ms. Callaway?
Under Sheriff Macedo, thank you for the reminder. I remember the discussion just a little bit different, maybe the end result was the same, but we talked about how sophisticated that system was for the jail, and that we did not have the skill set in the county to manage that. And I thought we were contracting, and was it with Kitchell, to manage the system for us? I mean, I don't remember us saying, oh, we can't afford it. I mean, you said we did, but there was a lot of discussion about that.
There was, and Kitchell was hired as the facilities maintenance contractor externally, and that included a large amount of maintenance within the facility, including keying the facility, getting it up and running, maintaining it after it was running, to its entirety with some exception. There were some exceptions where you would have to bring a specialized vendor in to conduct repairs for certain things outside of the experience level of the two contracted Kitchell employees. However, Kitchell also had external employees that they could bring in for certain matters. But I think what has happened with some of these systems is unbeknownst to us during construction, some of the components that were installed, were installed as, and this is the education I'm receiving, were installed at end-of-life, meaning they were old components, and they were installed probably at a reduced cost into a new jail, and therefore, they had manufactured some new components that were going to be used in the near future. So the fact that they weren't used by any means, but they were new and they were end-of-life, technology was improving, and oftentimes, I think, certain contractors can utilize that as a cost savings, and as I understand it, that may have impacted our overall facility. But I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, draft too far away from what we're talking about here today. The brain is important, as we've noticed, the brain contracts with every, or works with every other system, and the lack of the brain operating properly is degrading other systems, whether they're brand-new, end-of-life, what have you, and the fact that we haven't been able to upkeep with the maintenance has caused those, the degradation of those products to accelerate. So based upon the recommendation of some experts that certainly have more experience than I do, this is the most critical point that we need to fix immediately, and that's, therefore, that's why this board item was drafted for you in an emergency fashion. It's to get emergency repairs started, not finished.
I don't, I don't want to separate what's before.
Correct.
I mean, that's one issue, but sort of going forward to what Supervisor Toffinelli talked about, I mean, what's happened the last six or seven years, and are we just, what are we going to be going into? I wouldn't want the board in five years or six years facing the same scenario that we're in right now.
Yeah. The experts have told me these are complicated systems, they're not largely mechanical, they're continuing to drive to be more computerized. And I don't think I answered your initial question at the end, too, Supervisor Callaway. At the time this facility was opened, if you recall, as a county, we were struggling with funding. We were struggling to staff the facility, so there were decisions, I think, that were made by the County Administrative Office at the time that may have not even been, the board may have not even been briefed on those. But collectively, there were executive decisions made as it relates to cost, and I'm not saying that's entirely the problem with this Siemens system or why we're here today, but based upon what I'm being told by the company that actually came in and did the investigation, by the staff that's actually maintaining and operating the system, that it's certainly a consequence of those decisions. And unfortunately, we're all left here trying to make the best decision we can collectively to try and fix it. And we didn't come here to the board today without having internal meetings, and I need to personally apologize to Patrick, because Patrick has been hammering on us to fix this thing before it completely breaks, and that's an uncomfortable place to be when you know something is falling apart in a critical facilities, a building like that, and to see, you know, he works with his staff daily, and to see that faltering and not make progress, you know, I'm basically here trying to support him and the County Administrative Office that happens to be a little short-staffed at the moment to try and get this, these emergency repairs started. I don't want you to think that we are, you know, just running full speed ahead without any system of checks and balances, but unlike criminal justice matters, I'm not here speaking to you about something I have a lot of expertise in. I can provide you with some historical perspective on the building and what we were going through financially, both in the sheriff's office and the county, but I'm largely dependent on private contractors that have been hired to do these inspections, and again, Mr. Martin, who has one heck of a lot more experience in these systems and in construction and in facility maintenance, more so than I do.
Okay. So putting a string around this, we do this, then what?
So we have a Phase Two. We have a Phase Two that Patrick and I have already been discussing and working on. We've discussed it with Mr. Alt as well, and we actually think we have a good plan to come forward. But again, we specifically chose to not come in and overwhelm the board and ask for, especially at mid-year, several million dollars. We have, and I say several, it's probably not that much, but we have a Phase Two. Phase Two is more than $150,000. It's three, somewhere between $300,000 and $400,000. We don't have a final number yet, and we will know to what critical level that Phase Two needs to begin once we get Phase One completed and the company has had the opportunity to assess the system and report back to us on what it has fixed and what it has failed to repair.
Okay. One, this is an editorial. The sheriff's office is always overwhelming the board. I couldn't let you be here and not say that. But when that goes in, then who or what maintains the system like maybe we should have done six years ago? I mean, is it going to be our facilities department or an outside company?
Sure. What we would do at that time is we would either have the private company do it, but we would certainly consult with IT and Facilities and look for the least expensive yet strongest plan moving forward. But again, I'm going to be, and the sheriff's office is going to be incredibly reliant upon facilities, and one thing I should note, that the company that came in and did the inspection of our entire facility is not the same company I'm asking to retain. They provided us with the right companies to fix the right problems, so essentially, Patrick is being advised by a professional consultant, but he also has his own experience to be able to call, hey, I don't agree with that, or, you know, he's able to much more, he's much better at articulating what he sees as possible problems relating to facilities, maintenance, and construction with his staff than I am. So again, we're not running into this blind, but we're also, you know, I feel like I'm kind of, you know, trying to help something with which I, you know, normally I'm here speaking to you regarding criminal justice matters, and this is just not my, not my area of expertise. Ms. Alt, do you have something to say real quick?
I do, Mr. Chair. Thank you. I just wanted to provide a little bit of context as to the overall plan and why this particular incident... particular instance is an emergency. As you recall, when we had the study session last month, I brought this item forward as a suggestion for consideration and strategic planning. And I did so on the basis that myself and Mr. Macedo and the sheriff and Patrick, we've all been meeting, looking at and examining at board direction from previous years, how we need to keep the jail systems up to date. There's a variety of them, there's the front-end automation that we're speaking about, mechanical systems, laundry, security systems, and those cover a whole host of issues with the jail. So, in looking at how we would bring a multi-year plan together to help the board be able to budget over a period of time to be able to address these issues, as we were looking at the front-end automation, that's where we started with these anomalies in the system where we're able to identify that we're really at end-of-life for that particular system. And that's the one we're here before the board now speaking about, that if, you know, the strength of my technical terms, if we do have a hiccup in that particular system would cause us to have to move inmates out of the jail. The other items we can plan for, and when Mr. Martin suggested we've had the luxury of time, what we've had is the luxury to consider how we might plan for this over multiple years on all of the systems, but this particular system is at end-of-life and we need to respond on the front-end automation relatively immediately, as is why we're bringing this forward as an emergency. We can certainly bring back not only the update on this particular system, but what the plan would be to bring all of the systems up to date and have a cogent way of operation across all those systems and how we would maintain those over time. So my apologies for not providing that context upfront. Unfortunately, for Under Sheriff Macedo and Patrick Martin, we have been working on a lot of other things, and I haven't given them the support that they needed to actually contextualize this, but that's why we brought it forward last month in the strategic planning discussion. And I'll stop there for any potential questions.
Thank you. Mr. Toffenelli, you're about to ask another question.
Well, I was, and I guess the question would be for Patrick, or maybe Jim would know. This piece of equipment that we're going to be purchasing and installing, have they given you an expected lifespan? Do you know what the expected lifespan is?
With any, anything of this nature, I mean, it really depends on how technology advances and changes, but you could expect 10 to 15 years out of a normal life expectancy of these type of components. The more mechanical-type stuff depends on how well you do maintenance of brushes and things of that nature, but with IT components, you know, they could come in and go out with technology quite rapidly, but with the newer stuff, you would expect at least a 10-year life expectancy. You may have better technology, but it still functions quite well.
Thank you.
Any further questions by board members?
Okay. I'll move it on to public comment.
There is no public comment at this time.
Thank you. With that, I think we've had quite a discussion on this. It does seem to be quite the emergency for the systems at the jail. I'll entertain a motion, or any further questions first, Mr. Toffenelli?
Yeah, sorry. Mr. Alt, we have midterm coming up, and I'm sure it's going to be coming up within the next couple of weeks, and we'll know exactly where we're at financially with the county and where our expenditures are. Perhaps we can revisit this, I don't mean, I mean, we certainly can pass this today, but revisit what else needs to be done at the jail that we don't get in this emergency situation now, that's something that needs to be looked at and possibly find some funds at midterm where we could move forward to start going forward to take care of some of these things. Some of these things, I do have a question about that if we do look at this, that has to do with what we had conversations with over a year ago, two years ago, even when Tim was here, about the construction of the jail, especially with the dryers and the exhaust and those things, and where we're at, where we're going with them and how we're going to get that fixed, because right now, we can't use all of our dryers. We have issues there to keep breaking down, as you know. So, but maybe we can revisit or take a look at midterm, what we can do to alleviate some of the emergencies that looks like we're going to be having coming forward, get ahead of them, so to speak.
Yes, sir, Supervisor Toffenelli, that's a good suggestion. You did touch on some points, it's the board discussion previously that caused us to start looking at these in the first place and to try to put a plan forward. We were prepping for bringing some suggestions forward at mid-year when this emergency came up, and it just actually caused us to have to front-load for the emergency as opposed to be a little bit more thoughtful about a plan we put forward to the board. But your points are absolutely well-taken, and we will look at that for mid-year and in budget development for the coming fiscal year as well.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move this item, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Mr. Toffenelli.
I'd like to thank Mr. Toffenelli for his questions, that they're to point, I'll gladly second it.
Thank you, Mr. Geramendi, for a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Pass is not 5-0, voted the board. Thank you, Mr. Macedo, thank you, Patrick, for your time today. We'll move on to our supervisors' announcements in compliance with government code 532-32.3D. Board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of the local agency and may make other announcements or report on. Mr. Toffenelli?
I have a Mountain Valley MS meeting tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Callaway?
I have a California State Association Counties meeting this week.
Thank you. Mr. Geramendi?
I have a conference.
Ms. Follendorf?
I have a phone conference with New Maloney's, and there will be several county staff members on that call this week.
Thank you. I have nothing to report. Mr. Toffenelli?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up, kind of forgot a little bit about it, but I didn't, that we had a COG meeting last Wednesday, and I'm happy to report that the majority of that COG board has stayed together and they work very well. And we're moving forward on the wagon trail project, and as presented, David and Mr. Pakager from the items, it'll be coming forward to us, a lot of them. And we have secured a large amount of money, 6.25 million or whatever it is, for that project in addition to the three-plus million we had at COG, so we're looking very well at getting that construction done in the western portion of it, the first phase of it, here relatively soon. Hopefully, we'll start breaking ground sometime later on this year for that project, finally, after all the years that it's been in the makings, so...
Thank you, Supervisor Toffenelli. With that, we're done today. You all have a good day.